Mr. Phelps, if you'd like to begin.
Okay, I will call the November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Southwick Planning Board to order. And we do have a quorum. Four of the five members present. This meeting is being recorded and it's also in a hybrid forum, which means here, present, live, and we have people on Zoom as well. And is anybody in the audience recording the meeting? Raise your hand if you can, if you want to. Okay, anybody on? It will be recorded on Zoom, so. Okay. Planning Board time, seven P M. Planners report, please.
Okay. The last planning board meeting, we talked about me that came in from a Westfield farmer looking to essentially purchase a plot of land from our model, the state down College Highway where there's a labor camp for agricultural labor. That particular use is protected as an accessory used to an onsite agricultural operation, but I couldn't find a good way to frankly, well, fit that into our law or our local bylaws. So after some discussions, we reached out to town council and it appears that it would be solely looked at as a residential use, assuming that the lot to be carved off didn't have an active agricultural component to that. So I guess my report to the planning board would be that I will be reaching back out to the farmer that made this inquiry, Mr. Hinckley. He's welcome to have his attorney submit a legal opinion for further review. Town council did indicate there's not a whole lot of case law for that particular scenario. I wanted to close that loop with you. Another ongoing conversation was related to Congamon Road, Mr. Ken Adelston and former Cracker Joe's. We've had a couple of discussions as to how to sort out parking in transient boats, how that might offset. I've done some research and one of the outstanding, I wasn't able to close the loop on it, was coordination with the city of Pittsfield, the city planner. We're on, I had the name, let's have a sound again, it's not Pontusac, is it Pontusac? There was the two lakes, larger lakes out there. There are both restaurant and marina operations out there in similar scenarios where they are in constrained neighborhoods. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a good apples to apples comparison because you can appreciate that the city of Pittsfield has a wide range of lane uses within their limits, very rural to very industrialized. So they have a lot of accommodations already built in to their ordinances that can allow for flexibility in trying to get adequate parking to these tight locations. So in a nutshell, at least at this point in time, I haven't come up with a good comparison to another municipality that's faced that transient slip offset of required street vehicle parking. That was the specific that we were trying to pin down. The search goes on, we'll see what we can dig up.
Did you look at Brunel's Marina?
I did. That facility has a lot of acreage associated with it. And both in terms of what they have for designated parking and in years past, I've seen overflow parking with trailers and tow vehicles behind in some of the fields of the facility. I did talk to the town planner, it was out happy, and they haven't had any issues whatsoever.
But did they have a bylaw or any kind of a number as to parking spaces for?
Nothing that would be any more sophisticated than we're working with. So that's essentially where that discussion is.
And we don't have an application for that.
We don't, this has been, where we left the discussion with Mr. Adelston, we're going to do some courtesy research on our end. Our bylaws say that I'm going to paraphrase and say that the applicant should be, that this can be considered, this particular reduction that's offered by industry standards or something to that effect. So the other item I want to report that's agree about bringing the upholstery service into town and looking at a number of retail plots along Congamon Road and College Highway, just making sure that there's nothing that flew in the face of that. Out on Congamon Road, it'd be a matter of sign permitting and then making sure that the off-street parking is adequate and appropriate for a selected site. On College Highway, we're business restricted, so that depending on which business is selected, if they already have a primitive retail component out there, then perhaps it's frankly just a sign submitted to us. If this is an augmented, I think then again, maybe it's a replacement or something that was then be a special permit for us to issue. I've got a couple of parties that might be unmuted at the moment, if you don't mind, just double check in and then we can get the ball rolling with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
We're all set. Alrighty, we have some meeting minutes. One set going back to July twentieth. That was the meeting at the Regional High School for the Ivana Project. Did everyone get a chance to look at these? Okay.
I didn't get to look at your edits yet for the September twenty-first, but the July I'm all set.
Twenty, July, we did note Jessica wrote up. We should change the motion. We have to have a motion in there that we accepted the applicants' withdrawal without prejudice. So we should have that in the record. And then we did close the hearing, so there should probably be two motions there. And then or we closed the hearing, I'm sorry.
Whether or not that was actually.
To circle that back, may want to check and make sure. So I entertain a motion to accept those July twentieth, twenty twenty-one minutes with the changes. So move second. Okay, Mr. Utzinger made the motion. Mr. Sutton seconded, all those in favor, roll call vote, Marcus Phelps, aye, Richard Utzinger, aye, David Sutton, aye, Dave's been aye.
Just the four, aye.
Thank you. You're catching up, right? So September twenty-first. I had looked at these and made some suggestions which are showing up somehow in here. It's not in color, but.
I regret we don't have a color picture to do on it. However, with a gray tone.
Do we want to?
Because I haven't had a chance to look at them.
Okay. So we'll table minutes from September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. I think, you know. Okay. This is an opportunity for public comment. Anyone who is not on the agenda, who would want to address the board. This is the opportunity to raise your hand, state your name, please, and your address if you're interested in. Yes, very good. Yes.
My copies are in color.
Nice.
Andy Reardon, twenty-three Woodside Circle, also on Hudson Drive.
Do you want to donate a picture of color picture to the board?
I could. Have a seat. This is better than sharing, thank you. In two thousand and three, I was issued a permit to build on Hudson Drive and I'd like to go back and revisit that and see if we can bring that into line with permits that were issued to other businesses in that period of time and since. And also looking at other similar businesses like mine in town that were never subjected to the questions that I were subjected to. I just want to know the procedure as to how do we get started? Where do I sign up? I kind of discussed it with John a while ago. We never really came to a decision.
So what's the date that you have a permit now?
My permit, my permit was dated February twenty-eight, two thousand and three. So each and every one of y'all, some late evening reading.
Interfere?
I'm going to take down to the colored ones just for you. Restial black and white.
Specifically, what are you looking at or?
Tonight, I just want to know, I want you guys to read through that and see what you think. And then I just want to know the procedure, where do we go to actually have an official discussion? Not interested in detailed discussion until you all read it. You read it and tell me what you think. This is kind of what I'm here tonight.
So you want the board to review this and in light of things that have gone on since twenty, or two thousand and three with other decisions that were made for businesses.
Things that were made, decisions that were made in that period of time with the laws that were in place in that period of time.
And as far as procedure, you would have to submit an application for modification to the special permit. And then you would request what you would want changed. Added, deleted, whatever.
Right.
Yeah. So that would be the process. John would provide the applicant setup, public hearing. Go through that.
Right.
You did it for a bit, so it would be the same process.
Yep.
Yeah.
Awesome. If you don't mind me asking, in the refresh of my memory, this is the original permit and the one that's in effect for the part right now. I think on that, on those plans, we call it phase two, was shown in some, some format.
Correct.
Greater detail was added, it was probably five, six, seven years ago at this point. Was any portion of that next base started? That would essentially have that permanent amendment in effect? Or have we not advanced with any part of the stormwater or additional buildings?
We've done some of the site work.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
We haven't done any of the construction, obviously, without a permit.
Right, I'll overview and see if, you know, any portion of that would have kept existing permits in place alive. I'll happy to circle back to you tomorrow morning on that.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so just stop by and pick up, we're going to get those tonight, the papers I need for that. The application. Sure, all right. That's it.
Do you have a Gmail?
I do.
Another public comment in the audience. Say your name and address, please.
David McCallum, four Pinnacle Drive. I noticed that you have forty-two Depot Street on the agenda tonight. I am the chair of the conservation commission, I cannot stay into the hearing. So I just wanted to give you guys an update as to where that change is coming from when you do come here. So due to some of the changes in the board, we had to reopen the hearing and there was a new legal act posted. And we met with the representative from Rebecca and Associates at our meeting on November first. They reviewed the plans with the tire board for conservation. Fortunately, that night, we had seven members present, so it was a full board. So we reviewed the plans, continued the meeting until the fifteenth, in lieu of us going out and doing the site visit. One of the things that we had asked Rebecca to do is to go out and actually stake out where the buildings were going to be. Primarily, the one building that we have in question, the building going up on the left side that sits within sixty-eight feet of the resource area. So it's just inside the hundred-foot buffer. So we went out and took a look at it. We've made multiple attempts to kind of negotiate with the people at Rebecca to go back to their developer and come to a compromise about moving those, that one building off of the resource area a little bit further. We have not had any back and forth with them, so right now, from our standpoint, the plan is the plan is the plan. It will be before us on the fifteenth. Maybe they'll have a limited plan between now and then, I don't know. If not, we're going to assume they're going to want us to vote on the plan that's there. So that's kind of where we are. And again, I know you guys are going to talk about it, so I just wanted to give you that.
How far, how far does that building need to be moved?
Well, so right now, it's sitting at sixty feet, sixty-eight feet off. What we have asked that they move.
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Just ten feet.
Just ten feet away from the water. Right. And I think over the years, you'll find that our board, like most boards in town, willing to compromise particularly with, you know, residents of the town that have a hardship and, you know, you need some sort of variance to make sure that they can get a septic system in where they want. They want to fill the garage or what have you. In a situation like this where it's commercial development and you're asking the town of Southwick to, you know, bend our bylaws to meet their needs to put in a building that they're going to sell for profit. I think it's only fair that we ask them to, you know, help us a little bit further away from the resource areas that we're concerned. So that's kind of where I will say I stand. You know, I don't speak for the whole board, there's seven people on it, that's my opinion. And that's the argument I'm going to continue to make with, yeah.
Thank you.
I would love to stay, but I got a little help out with scouting for food, so it's a public comment on scouting for food. We're going to be picking up on November twentieth. All right, everyone bags, I'm putting you out.
You guys do an awesome job with that.
Thank you.
Okay, were there any comments on Zoom? Public comments?
I do not see any.
All right, thank you. You're going to see us. Okay, we'll proceed to our seven-ten gen item, which is the Greens of Southwick West subdivision. This is a proposed modification to a special permit, definitive plan approval and site plan approval. And it's a continuation of a public hearing. Do we have any information?
What I do have, unless a representative wishes to speak, I do have a continuous letter. Mr. Tom, listen to the occasion.
Could you provide your name?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is John Tomcheski, design engineer with Carl Rebecca Associates. As you mentioned, I'm here to present a plan for modification to special permit and subdivision and site plan approval for the Greens of Southwick West subdivision, existing subdivision on the west side of College Highway. There are basically four pieces to the, to the modification. One would be to combine what are existing lot twenty-three and twenty-four to create one larger parcel into lot twenty-four. Second piece of it would be to break off a triangular piece here and convey it to what is lot nine, which is a lot that fronts on Sawgrass Lane within the subdivision. The third piece of the modification is to remove a fifty-foot buffer strip on lot twenty, which would allow the potential owner to access the lot off of College Highway rather than across lot nineteen and onto Sawgrass Lane. And the fourth piece is to, in the original decision for the subdivision, it was proposed to have a ten-foot stone path along this access easement to the open space. The change would be to, instead of constructing the stone path, would be to just the pathway would be, would be shown by, you know, large boulders to show you exactly where that pathway is, which is, it's actually on lot eight. So it's right along here, it'd be, you know, ten foot wide, I assume it would be grass, so. Those are the four pieces of the modification.
If I may for a moment, I apologize, everybody, I was completely there was not a continuous request for this application.
So we're proceeding. The board may recall, we discussed that at some length previous meeting and.
Which item, four items here. Pardon?
Which item is this? At the sidewalk, I mean, the walk area for lots.
Yeah. Brett, you were present for that?
I think Zoom.
You were Zoom, okay. We have a comment letter here, I believe, from Randy Brown, email. Yeah. Dated ten twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one. So, "I reviewed the path to the open space at the Greens West today. The developer installed stakes every fifty feet to mark out the proposed boulder locations, which look good to me. It appears that runoff from the back of lot seven will flow northeasterly across the open space path behind the house on lot eight and into the wooded area north of the subdivision. The open space path should be constructed so, one, it does not change this flow path, and two, will withstand water running across it. A path that is vegetated with grass will be most effective to prevent corrosion and washouts during rain events. Further, over the coming months, we will monitor Sawgrass Lane to see if this change in flow will eliminate or reduce the icy conditions that formed on the road in this area last winter. Signed, Randall Brown, Director, Department of Public Works, Town of Southwick." So everybody has a copy of that in there. Boulder. Any, did we get any other comments at all? Nothing.
I did receive a comment and I apologize if it was from Mr. Gardner or Mr. Harrison related to the staking of the boulders. Fifty feet.
Well, I'm happy, John.
Oh, would you like to?
Basically, we've seen the stakes that are there and they're overwhelming, frankly. There's, and they're every fifty feet. And there's probably fifteen of them, I don't remember the count, but they're overwhelming. So I propose that if they put the boulder in, they put them in in an alternate fashion. So one on the right, nothing on the left, one on the left, nothing. Put them that way, they're going to be a lot less explosive. We also did, in the comments that I wrote to you, John, about, from the landscaper, who was talking about, you know, trying to cut that grass with all of that activity, with all that boulders in place. And, you know, describing them is difficult because they got to go around them and so on. At this point, we're unclear as to who's actually responsible for that, both in terms of installing the pathway itself and also maintaining it. So we would like some clarification on that, because the first point that we wanted to make was, we like some complication of the stakes that they stand to be replaced with alternatives. You'll still see the pathway, it'll be quite visible. But right now, it's safe everywhere and it'll be boulder everywhere and it's too much.
We need your name and address.
I'm Patrick Harrison, eleven sixteen Sawgrass Lane.
Sixteen. Sixteen Sawgrass.
One more concern regarding that area. That's considered my property. Do I incur liability if somebody gets injured on that stretch?
Question. That, that is part of the homeowners association.
Part of the homeowners.
Be part of the homeowners association's liability.
And liability. And it's a homeowners association to be tasked with taking care of it as well. So any members of the board comment, anything?
A quick question, you had a mention that or Randy Brown, is it that water from lot seven would bypass through lot eight? Is that correct?
That was.
If I understand it correctly, I haven't been, I haven't been out here to see what it looks like to the rear of these lots, but that's based on the description from Randy Brown, it sounds like it flows off the backside here towards the open space.
No, it's like, well, right through the middle of lot eight. So your two cars, that's, they're all, yeah. And we installed the lawn, on that lawn, and there's an existing hill behind it. The two come together in the form of a bee, and the water is probably sitting in that area.
Is the owner of lot eight?
Discussion with the owner of the lot next door. And they're positioning us to facilitate some kind of a pipe that will run out. And we haven't figured out the detail of it, but in principle, we're not against it for that at this point in time, we were earlier. But we're more amenable to that right now.
Are you?
At the front of the lot, which we don't see as valid to run this water into it. And right now, the water flows in lot eight from runoff lot seven.
Okay, are you lot seven or lot eight? You're lot eight. Okay. So I would think landscape, somebody's got to what are we going to do for lot seven, it's got to be acceptable, if you're going to cross lot eight, it has to be acceptable to the numbers of lot eight.
Wasn't the historical information, it remind me that lot seven made changes and that increased the water flow onto your property?
It probably did. You know, I think my understanding was they were doing their best, it was to try and alleviate the problem. If they graded the, the ground there quite significantly, spent a lot of money doing that, putting in top five, so on. Just move the water basically on to our lot instead of on the street. But I think probably, you know, they were doing their best and I think we're sympathetic to that.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I can give a little context, the last Mr. Brown's correspondence, that email, that last sentence, I think it references the fact that does is that last winter, there was an issue with groundwater running onto the cul-de-sac area, creating an icing issue out there. At this point in time, at the houses, essentially they graded so that from the front, the midline of the house, property is drained towards cul-de-sac, we're to that point, back towards the open space. So the drainage agreement arrangement that just are getting it in the post, and Mr. Harrison are working on is to resolve the drainage over the private portions, but in terms of the subdivision, looks like some of those drainage issues have been alleviated and are subject to monitoring as we enter the winter months.
Yeah, I mean, we made the comment here before, a fundamental problem is the lack of drainage on that street. It's a fundamental problem. It should have been additional nine-horse cover, but then take that walker away. There weren't, so the windows, when the water ran onto that circle, it stopped there, there was no work involved. Had a manhole cover been inserted, as it probably should have been, then the water wouldn't run away.
If I may, I don't want to get into debate, there are oh, and that's okay, it would be a convenient solution that isn't on the table.
Yet to be determined if it's monitored. Well, sure, we have not accepted any roads, we don't.
That's, that's correct, but in terms of the approved plans, they did not show drainage structures at the far end. That water was supposed to she flow across the cul-de-sac.
So on the revised plans, are you showing a difference in the grading to reflect how the lots have been laid out?
That is dependent on what's, what this modification is for. I mean, that's just a, that's sort of a grading issue between lots, it's not, has nothing to do with any modification. It's not, has nothing to do with any modification, the, you know, these are different pieces. I mean, I think if anything, you know, turning a stone path into a, a grass path is going to improve that situation. Again, with that, I don't know what's, if, if any lawn has been established out there on lot seven, or if, or if your lawn is fully established, I think that'll certainly help once it's a, you know, if it's-
Well, our, our lawn has been established up to the point of that, of that valley that it's become, and, uh, the water is pooling between the two. Um, you know, it hasn't been there long enough to figure out the full extent of it, uh, but the water pools there right now, and, and we're trying to work it out. I, I don't really agree with you, that it's got nothing to do with your plan. I think it has a lot to do with your plan, because the, that, that easement that runs up along is what we're talking about today, and, and the water pooling there is, is an impediment to that, frankly. Um, and what it'll mean is, more of an view, that people will skirt it, but they come into the property where they shouldn't be, and we're going to have to police that. And I think we've said here before, our policing of that would be to dial nine one one and, and get a policeman over and have them available, uh, which is not a good solution. It is not a, a practical, it's not a long, and basically, so, we're prepared to work with the landowner next, next to us, um, but, you know, there has to be some given take here.
Okay, so, the four requested changes in the modification, people have heard what those are?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other, any comments, additional comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Dennis Magic, I'm the homeowner of lot seven on Sawgrass Lane, uh, and this is a comment about the water, uh, two thousand, or twenty twenty, the winter of twenty twenty, the water onto the cul-de-sac, and it was from the water coming from lot number six, seven, and also eight, coming down into the valley and onto the road, which caused a huge ice issue for the winter of twenty twenty and the beginning of twenty twenty-one. And the so, temporary solution was to stop that overflow from, all the way from the back end of the street, or back of the houses, and onto the street itself. When we graded it, it made sure that only the front of our houses is what gets onto the street. The past two, three rainfalls that we had, uh, we monitored, we watered, and it seems like as soon as the rain stopped, after everything starts drying over, there used to be, or there is not any more water onto the street itself. So it's a temporary solution for the winter, so there won't be any water onto the, onto the street, having an ice skate, ice skating rink at the cul-de-sac. But, um, just like, um, of the, or the Randy Brown, on the comment, uh, is that if the grade is changed, there might be just, uh, but it might just actually cause a little, uh, not a grading, but it might just change the grade of the land, uh, of the land itself and cause more water into the street itself.
Any other comments? People here in the audience, uh, anybody on Zoom? Comment?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'm inclined to, uh, ask for a motion to close the hearing if people feel they've received enough information on those four changes that are requested. We wouldn't vote any, any decision this evening, but. Entertained a motion to close the hearing, we can continue, or you also want to?
I'm not happy with that. I'm not happy with your answer.
So you make a motion to continue the hearing?
No.
Oh, yes.
Okay, say the motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until these issues get resolved.
Till, when is our next meeting?
Seven.
Two.
November?
November twenty-third.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Are we going to give them specific guidance, what?
Yeah.
What, what, what are you, what are you?
What, what is your concern for?
Well, first thing, I, I think these two, whether it's our problem or their problem, will depend after, to resolve the water issue. Number one, number two, Randy Brown had so some, he was a little doubtful on the ice issues. The gentleman in the back said, thinks they've been resolved, or maybe Randy was saying they've been resolved, so.
Is it Randy on?
He is.
Randy, you out there somewhere in TV land?
The modification doesn't request, or doesn't address anything. As far as the drainage, it, it addresses that access to the open space. Uh, the sporting, combining of the lots, and, uh, taking a piece, adding to another lot, and removing that part of that fifty-foot buffer along College Highway, so.
Okay. I just wanted to-
So our, our, our request, and I mean, this, this, this modification has written, has, you know, a, a ten-foot travel path in it. Uh, is, is, is it a grade that has no longer necessarily begin into grass? Secondly, our question earlier in the meeting about moving the stake, and putting the alternative.
Right, we, we've heard that comment, and when we deliberate the decision, we, we would think about that. I mean, we know where they are now, we know what it looks like. So we, we have to discuss that.
We recommend that you go and see it, you know, right now.
Yeah. You, you're okay with the, the fifty-foot, you, you want them offset so they look, look better.
Yeah, I mean, it's just technology.
Excuse me.
Is there a comment from the back of the room, just before we close the hearing, gentlemen?
What is, what is this public hearing about? What are the, what are the four, the four basic things we're working on?
Hold on guys, hold on guys.
I do press the construction, twenty-five millishere node, um, I believe during that last meeting, I don't know if that was informal or not, there was some special, that was. But in that meeting, it was discussed, agreed to by everyone that we're going to state out these boulders at fifty feet, fifty.
That's amazing.
This has been done to try to revert this, the residence of Sawgrass Lane. At this point, we're not opposed to going back to the original plan, keeping the boulders off the table and building in faster plan. Continue, if you're giving on something just interest in this, become a little bit much, it's an expense to us to continue, and, I mean, I think we met all of their requests. Um, the water issue does not prevent the subdivision, it's two lots. We're here as a subdivision, bringing them outside into subdivision, it's not our jurisdiction.
Mr. More? So your question was the four changes, could you go, could you state those again? And show on the chart, on the layout?
Sure. Piece one would be combining what is lot twenty-three and twenty-four into one larger, lot twenty-four. There would be a portion of that lot twenty-four broken off and combined with lot nine, which fronts on Sawgrass Lane. Piece number three would be to remove the fifty-foot buffer, uh, to allow access, uh, lot twenty to access their lot from College Highway. And the, the fourth piece was to change the, the ten-foot wide stone path to a grass path with, with boulders.
Boulders to delineate.
Is state approval for that driveway needed ahead of time, or we can, we can request the plan and?
For that driveway already, we have a non-stop curcut in that.
Okay, all right, that was-
So that would be discussed during, uh, our decision process.
Right, okay. Um, there was also a question that HOA representative had the last time about the reduction in number of lots, whether that changed for these, did that ever get resolved, or is that not something we really? All right, and then the other issues that were brought up were the lack of streetlights, stop signs, and the improperly installed berms that don't really block anything on College Highway.
Yeah. That's got nothing to do with what we're-
Well, right, but if we're changing, if we're approving a modification to the subdivision and they're not holding up their end of this special, all right, I'm just bringing up the concerns that were addressed at the last meeting.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor, a motion was made.
To continue, but we continue discussing, so we're going to finish it, I want to make sure everything is covered.
Yep. Way in the back, say your name, please.
Uh, yes, Joe Corner, Sawgrass Lane, uh, last meeting we had here, I got a fund and explained and discussed a bunch of, um, uh, the, the stop sign, the streetlight, the, everything there. And, uh, just mentioned, it's, it's been done, the streetlight looks phenomenal, the signs there, then the wild light sign, the repair, the whole front, it looks great. Um, you know, and, and, but to go on with the discussion of this open space walkway, and what I interpret Randy Brown wrote, and what I agree with Crestview on this point is, the open space, ten foot, five foot, whatever you call, has been marked on, it's not going anywhere. Um, they brought up a motion for rocks to be placed every fifty feet with offset, so that it doesn't look like one straight line of rocks. What I interpreted Randy Brown as writing was that when it grows into, uh, vegetation starts growing, it may not affect any of that area, and it's not doing it. Right now, it looks good, I don't see any, right. I agree with Crestview with Creston, I don't see a problem with the other lots being combined as one on the side. And as far as the walkway, offsetting those stones, eighteen to twenty-inch stones going through, in my opinion, living in that subdivision would be all right. And I don't think we're going to move that open space area, so as far as, you know, continuing something, I, I don't see why that would make a difference. That's just my opinion. Um, whether you're going to re, try to remove it down the road, that's a different story, but offsetting rocks, the drainage is going to happen, it'll be fixed eventually. I do agree that things have been done already besides the berms, but, uh, I do think we've been, uh, that's my opinion, I, I don't understand the water and drainage issue. The walkway is going, it's not going to be a walkway, it's going to be grass with rocks. There's not much else you can do for that.
One more in the back.
Jason Peory, uh, seventy-seven College Highway.
Speak up a little bit.
Jason Peory, I agree with that, but, uh, you know, basically, well, a lot of these issues will be outstanding until we actually go through the process of handing off the road. There'll be a whole town hall meeting essentially revolving around that point. So a lot of these issues, if there is problems that are not being implemented, that's what we're going to show us now. This is just a basic modification to the plan, right? This should not be delayed. This will be the fourth meeting actually to be delayed. So I mean, if, if, if we're acceptable for where they are, I would ask you guys to consider this voting on it, uh, pushing through, and if there is a problem with those points, if these individual folks that live there have a problem with, in next May, when we have this book, push that road up onto the Thomas South, like, you guys, you have to hit us, you have to hit us, but I don't think this needs to be delayed anymore than that.
Okay, back to my original thought, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing. I'll second. So the records show Mr. Sutton made a motion to close the hearing. David Spina seconded the motion. Roll call, vote, Marcus Phelps' eye.
Richard Utsinger, I.
David Sutton, hi.
David Spina, hi.
Jessica Fortin, I.
Thank you. So the hearing is closed, we will work on a dis, we, John will work on a decision, modification decision, and we'll discuss things at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have time to do that.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we have one twenty-five Sheep pasture road.
I'm going to give him a harder time if he didn't have to do it. Don't argue with me, we're being reported, don't, don't tell me what to do.
So we have an application for an estate lot, special permit, stormwater management permit, and site plan approval. Uh, this is a continuation of a public hearing. This was, uh, I believe, Arnold property?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Excuse? Folks, could we go out if you want to visit and talk? Thank you. The owl is very sensitive. Got emotions and feelings.
Basically, Steve's house is on the left, Steve's house on the right, Steve's home.
No, 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 uh, oh. Let's see, who we have here, we have-
Steve's house is right here.
Okay. Do we have a plan to look at?
We do, we've got it up here, and I think Mr. Tomaszewski has a revised plan as well.
So, my name is still John Tomaszewski, with our Rebeca Associates, and this is a plan to, uh, create an estate lot, um, off of Sheep pasture road, off the west of the side. Um, it's a sheep pasture road here, north, it's this way on the plan. Um, so, this project is currently being permitted for conservation, there is, the, the driveway is going to have to pass uh, between a, a pair of weapons here. I understand is that there was a site visit, um, last week, the middle of last week. Um, we have addressed all DEP comments, we have addressed all of conservation. Um, they just, but they haven't closed the hearing yet. Um, I don't know which happens first, that, you know, if you need all clearance from conservation before you approve the estate lot or, so. I'm at least here to explain that to you, that's where we're at, so. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions, I think you, you sort of got the whole, the whole spiel about the, the project stuff.
So Steve Arnold's house is where the gentleman showed us. Where was Steve's parents' house, the cape up on the hill, is that?
It's going to go there, yeah. His house is here, his parents' house is over there.
Okay, so it's between, in between the lots.
Yeah, right, this is the, the ninth area of Edwood Golf Course.
Okay.
Eighteenth area of Edwood Golf Course, over there like that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yep. And there's a big barn, yeah, the big barn area. About here, there's a-
We can't do it until we get from conservation.
Home for, the rehabilitation home, and there's Steve's old mother's house.
There's one also, right, okay, yeah.
Edwood Golf Course is road, and then-
Yeah, okay, so I'll try to get it off.
Yep.
So, run by me again, wh- what is, what is conservation still, uh, looking to decide?
Uh, there's an existing westman here, um, it's also a stormwater permit as well. Um, the driveway, there is a sort of a dirt road that kind of goes through there, but it's just, yeah, and there's a, it's sort of like a busted culvert that you travel over, but you obviously want a nice formal driveway to get up in the back. So the, the plan is to replace the culvert and, you know, not really change any of the grades, and then, uh, you know, there's some, some decent grading to get up into here, and then, um, the house would be located here, a garage here, septic's down here. Um, and so there, like I said, there's stormwater permit as well, so there's some, you know, some pretty fancy, you know, drainage, uh, you know, bases in here to handle that. So it, it's basically, you know, you're, you're cutting through, you're working in buffer zone, so that's why it's the upper consideration.
Did we have in the record, we, we've already gotten comments from fire and police and so forth?
That's correct, uh, safety, fire, DPW, I think the DPW response was prepared for the last meeting we had in thirty-two person, and we continued with the last, or from, over the last one, I should say. Um, John, do you know if, uh, did Randy ever provide a, a response to the LA response?
Uh, yeah, we responded to his comments, I didn't, I'm not aware that, that there any more kickback, or if, if we didn't satisfy his, his, his requests or any, anything. Now, I know there were modifications made to some of these bases after the original design, so I, my assumption is that he's satisfied.
Uh, that's my general understanding as well, but I'll be happy to clarify that before this gets closed out.
Any comments from the audience on this special permit for an estate lot? Board members?
Just in conservation, right?
So, uh, we want to wait for conservation?
Yeah.
We do normally, yeah. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing till November?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
At, the tribal time is October.
What is a good time?
How about seven, ten PM?
Sounds good.
First one on the docket?
It's seven twelve.
I prefer seven twelve.
We're going to save that for the next one.
So I hear that motion?
It's almost.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Sutton, seconded by Mr. Utsinger to continue this hearing to October, or October, November twenty-fifth, at seven ten. Twenty-third. At seven ten, seven ten PM, yeah. Roll call, vote, Marcus Phelps' eye.
Richard Utsinger, I.
David Sutton, hi.
David Spina, hi.
Jessica Fortin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, stormwater management permit application for one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue. Do we have anybody here?
I have a continuous- I have a continuous request, um, the consulting engineer.
We've watched this, we've seen this.
No, this is what we, we, it was roughly a month ago, we jumped a meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Goddard, I'm ready to request continuation for the review period for the stormwater from applications made for one fifty-nine Berkshire Avenue. Please consider November twenty-third for the next, for the next, excuse me, available meeting day. Although I've prepared a response to your letter dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, there have been additional discoveries that are impacting final design. This includes additional flows from the um, boarding rail trail property that will contribute to the overall volume. I've enclosed a account of these findings with the intention of gaining an immediate, intermediate, excuse me, review by the department. So on the interim, we will continue to communicate with Mr. Hale, gentleman, especially Derek J. Hale.
Entertain a motion to continue this hearing till. November twenty-third at seven twenty P M.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Utzinger, seconded by Mr. Spina to continue this hearing. Marcus Phelps, eye.
Richard Utzinger, I.
David Sutton, I.
David Spina, I.
Jessica Fortin, I.
Thank you. Okay. Forty-two Depot Street, I will have to refuse myself, so. I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Sutton.
He's next on the hit list.
And I will, call me when you.
Everybody here for that tonight?
Are they here tonight for that?
No, I received a continuous request from Arlo Lebec Associates.
So we're looking for a continuous.
He asked for one quick moment. You can walk around the uh, the building. We're not jamming up on timeline, I, seven forty-five, eight o'clock, we're fine. One moment, I'll read that in.
Do you get seven twelve now?
Mr. Gordon and board members, on behalf of our client, Ordean Cloud Real Estate LLC, our office is here requesting continuation of the public hearing scheduled for tonight's meeting to allow time for Arlo Lebec Associates. To continue coordination with the Conservation Commission, uh, per the recent site visit. We are hereby requesting to be placed on the board's next available agenda. Should you have any questions or comments regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact our office at your earliest convenience, sincerely, Sophia Edgins, this. Katie Director of Operations, Arlo Lebec Associates.
Sure, what page, John, what time?
Seven thirty, you give your next one.
November twenty-third?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing for forty-two Depot Street to November twenty-third at seven thirty P M.
Second.
She's the one who made the motion.
David Sutton, I.
David Spina, I.
Jessica Fortin, I.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
The audience left once or twice.
Eight o'clock, we. She's been, I don't, I don't know, I haven't been in this room.
Okay, yeah. It doesn't have to happen every time, since John won hearing started at some point. Yeah, good, I get my my admission staff every meeting. She knows, she knows.
First project, what do you call it with that name? First, first, um, because of project?
For the wireless communications services. For a landowner, we've got a much broader look at it, but I'm happy to reach out and see if I can. Get something to grow, uh, about it, and see what options might be um, out there, should the town. Look to pursue.
Well, that was, uh, I wasn't here at that meeting, but I did listen to the tape, and I submitted the affidavit, so. I can participate, uh, and I had submitted a written, some written comments, and one of my comments was. It would be useful to have a consultant to look and see where are, where, if there are gaps, what's left.
If there are.
Uh, if that needs to be, you know, taken care of, because. The original overlay zone was established, and then there was a modification that was done. And. That added mostly town properties to to the overlay map, I I don't know the exact. Delineations, there may have been some other properties that were added.
When we gonna put out the words, if anybody was interested, let us know.
Well, to that end, uh, so for the sake of discussion. Attorney Gary LaCory, uh, is here for another matter this evening, but in conversation, it came up that to go. The part owner of South Long Yard, South Long Yard, might be an option, so you're, yes, getting the word out of the street.
Who's interested in having one and has the space to put it?
There there, that may.
That's a good place to start.
At least, again, help determine some ideas.
Put in my backyard, cause I can't get.
I was gonna say, there are definitely gaps in town service, yeah.
So, our, will, Mr. LaCory, would you wanna say some?
Two sixty-six South Long Yard Road. Yeah, I own thirty acres on South Long Yard Road, and Andy Felix owns another five or so acres. And we were, we participated on the outside, more or less, looking in on the Lexington Circle. Cell tower issues, and and obviously there was a lot of opposition there. Um, we'd like to propose our parcel of land for for use where it is. I don't think there's gonna be the opposition, and I've been approached already, I had an option from a cell tower company before, about three, four years ago. Uh, they liked the the high land of it and everything else, where it sat in relation to Oak Ridge Golf Course, and to the other land in Suffield. They thought it was a perfect mix, and so, um, we'd we'd like to propose it, and I know, I understand the overlay district, I talked to Mark Bedling. And he said that could be over, you know, he can overcome that anyways, but we're willing to propose it. In conjunction with ownership of the town of some sort too, uh, rather, you know, just to make it work for everybody. So, um, I I think it works, I don't think you're gonna get the opposition that we had, you know, for Lexington Circle. And I think it's a good area, I, you know, strategically, looking at it for. The, uh, what carriers want in that area, and what they proposed to me, so I think it would work.
Thank you. We, you know, this, this is an opportunity to modify that overlay map. I don't know if we wanna. Modify the text also of the, of the bylaw, there may be some things in there too, we wanna adjust.
Strength of things like requiring.
You think it's a good part of the master plan project? That is a possibility.
Well, that's a possibility, I think part of um, our chair's intention here was to, if we are going to make changes, that we might want to make changes. Prior to the conclusion of other legal matters that are currently happening, so that if we have. A modified communications district that maybe perhaps includes Mr. LaCory's property, that the. The solution could be offered, that another parcel is available to that company, so I think that's why we were pushing to get this done. Prior to the completion of the master plan.
And, and. If things flowed the way, unlike, you know, there, it would go to town meeting in May.
Right.
Because we had, you know, this has to be a town meeting vote passed by two thirds.
Make for when it comes time for the legal mucky-mucks to be, how about you, how about you, what do you got, what do you got, we have a modified communications district. Coming down the pipeline in May is.
Possible.
We want them to be able to come back with.
So we we need to find out who's interested in in having their parcel added as quick as possible.
The only thing is, Dave. I'm just thinking more of a. A comprehensive look at the town by someone, a company that knows.
Isn't giving us information on what they want us to see.
Because this is an opportunity to delete some of the parcels that are in there now on the overlay map. We wanna see where we need to add.
The Legion was talking about their property, that was one of them, there was a couple others that had some big high points they were talking about adding.
Do you, look at the school property. I don't know if Pioneer Valley Planning Commission does any of this, if they have a technical person. To me, I would like to see a, I know we don't have money to do anything, but. We can ask for money, people go to the finance committee all the time and ask for money, but. If we could have a request for proposals from a company that does. Frequency analysis, or whatever you wanna call it, I'm not a.
I think there's two things we wanna know, right? What kind of coverage gaps do we have in town, and what areas in town are suitable for putting a tower? From, you know, the engineering aspect of it, that would alleviate those gaps, and ideally, there's some overlap there, where, yes, you have a gap here, and we have a. Good spot to put a tower to fill that gap.
Yeah, is is the owner of the property willing to do it?
Well, then that's the third.
Yeah, you could go out and ask.
The residents around it, I mean, you know.
Possibly the bylaw language would need to be adjusted to maybe make more parcels available to fill the gaps. You know, right now, we have a certain fall distance and and all those kinds of things, tower heights.
Yeah, three and a half times, three and a half times that.
I kind of like those rules, cause it keeps separation from the folks that, you know, the one in their backyard that get that part of it.
So I guess to move forward.
To put together a list of large parcels, did we do that?
Uh, everybody wants to comb through a couple of reams of data, uh, the research's office was able to, essentially give us all the parcels in town. Uh, and the ability to sort by both acreage as well as land use by code, so I'm happy to distribute, I'm happy to. Separate the meat from the chaff in here, and try to narrow it down, it's useful, uh, with with any suggestion you may.
Do we know, do we have an idea of acreage?
You could do some.
I mean, you said you need.
Average pole's what?
You need three and a half, and we we allow one fifty, I think we allow one fifty.
So three and a half, three and a half times that.
Yep.
In both directions is what you gotta have, so that's your, that's your size.
And then screen those and see where we are.
Absolutely.
And provide a, uh, no, provide a map that highlights those here.
Before we get too far down the narrowing of parcels that we would be looking to consider. Do we want to try to get that input from the independent consultant, especially when it comes to small cell technology? That is coming down the road, um, if we want to have a separate section in our bylaw that addresses those versus a tower. We talk about towers at a hundred and fifty feet, that technically the wave of the future that's coming down. And those smaller cells are ones that are going to need to be located. Not a hundred and fifty feet away. About five G technology, you're talking about, so those are on like telephone poles, they're not, you don't install a hundred and, right, yeah, so. It's that sort of technical thing that we want to be aware of, if we're gonna be rewriting this bylaw right now, we have to take into consideration a new technology that. Might actually come before us in the next couple of years.
So we, so we have to even include that then in the text of the bylaw?
Right, which is also kind of why I was angling. My thought process of the whole overlay district is, is challenging to me because of that fact, if we. You know, we can certainly go through this massive effort of picking out these larger parcels and painting them on the. Throughout and making sure they're in the right places, but then if two years down the road, we get an application that says, that's, that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for this, and we have. Zero language in our bylaw that addresses those small cells. I think we'll be kicking ourselves.
We'd have to, so we need more information on these small cells.
I think so, and also, you know. Think about if they tell us, hey, we could solve all the gaps that we had that we were looking to solve with that Lexington Circle Tower. We could solve it with ten small cells along College Highway here, and but we don't have anything to guide us on that, that's what I'm thinking is.
And, and we could maybe address that, not using an overlay map, but describing it in text.
Right, so like if we are talking about a large monopole, then yeah, a hundred and fifty feet max, and we need this fall distance radius. Absolutely a hundred percent, but if we're talking about a small set cell technology. All right, so it's gonna be on a telephone pole, all right, so do we trust that all telephone poles in town are gonna? What do we, do we have to make sure that there's a certain secure feature up there to make sure it's not likely to fall on people walking down the sidewalks, do we want it? On buildings that are only two stories high, and as opposed to one story, because we're afraid that the waves are too low at that point, and. We're concerned about health concerns, so you know, there's all these factors that are knocking on our door, and I. I don't wanna ask him to go through all that ream of information and say, hey, take it all out, and then we're gonna be like, eh, we actually need to have a wireless district that covers the town.
We won't have him do it by the next meeting. What you can do with your spare time?
He doesn't need to sleep, he can do it over Thanksgiving.
Okay, so. We will, uh, so, look at that as far as Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. See if there's any other communities in the region that are working on some of those kind of things. And do they have anybody on staff, or have other communities contracted with some kind of a company? And we can certainly go and ask for money to, uh, do this, I mean, it's pretty important. Put communication in town, so.
As opposed to paying for cover of butts and litigation for them.
Well, we could save some money, yeah, that's true, yeah, in the long run, in the long run. Okay, so, uh, I'd enter. Oh, anybody in the audience, I'm sorry, besides Mr. LaCory, is there anybody? Cell power, pipe, wireless communication, people using their cell phones, yes?
There was a thought about Horizon has their coverage gaps, does that tell you where the gaps are in town?
No.
Those are where Verizon says their gaps are.
They're. Well, I know my house is one and a half, but probably not pinpoint.
Their, their advertised map coverage apparently is not an actual technical reflection of what coverage they claim to have, so.
Yeah, it would be better to have it.
The most PC way I can answer.
Not a very good person or whatever.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do have a raised hand.
Oh, in the, uh, Zoom, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman Doug Moglen, how are you? Five hidden place. We did hear loud and clear during the Verizon hearings that that parcel that was in the wireless communication overlay district is no longer suitable. And I think that the board should strongly consider to move forward with at least the map amendment to remove that parcel from the map, right? And as was alluded to by the associate member who's been well versed on this issue and following it very closely, to find an alternative piece of property that could support a tower under the existing bylaw nearby that would offer some equivalency of service without the density nearby may be appealing, given the fact that the existing application is under appeal, right? It gives the town potentially some options in discussing this with the applicant through a settlement process if one were to, you know, to happen. You know, the, the prospect of if the town were to actually lose outright in court, that they would just get their tower on that existing site. So there, it may be appealing to everyone involved to have an alternative location. I know Mr. Laquory spoke, and I'm not an attorney and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. Mr. Laquory's an attorney and, you know, perhaps that could be, it can, the, the bylaw could be overcome, but I don't think that that's always the right solution. You know, from a practical matter, it'd be better to go in front of town meeting and having the zoning map amended so that there was a suitable location for someone to have perhaps an, you know, an expedited permitting process or some other permitting process for an alternative location to that tower that was on the Lexington Circle. Um, and lastly, just about the five G and the upcoming stuff. Um, I attended a couple of seminars at two years ago Mass Municipal Association, I think even last year's one remote. And I'll make the recordings available to anybody who wants them, but there's a lot of additional rules around five G and those small towers and what the cities and towns have the ability to regulate for those. It is much more restrictive as to what you can regulate on those towers, because especially because they go on exist, a lot of them go on existing facility in the right of way on equipment that they already own. And so there's a, a much shorter period of time um, for review, almost absurd if you ask me, but, um, I'll get you those recordings because they were very, very interesting to me and I, I know I had sent the notes back to the planner at the time who's no longer the planner. So I will make sure I make them back available again, because it was very interesting to me, you know, because there had been a few cell tower hearings that had come in when I had been on that, this board. You know, a couple of them were denied outright and the applicant went away because they didn't justify an increase in coverage. You know, this one, you know, the argument could be made either way, I think, so. But the, the planning board argument is sound and, but it's subject to an appeal, so. And I want to make sure that or, or I'd like to see the town make sure that the needs, the, the hearing data that we got and the feedback that we got from residents was well heard. The planning board acted accordingly, but a, a court isn't going to have act, isn't going to sit and listen to the hours and hours testimony that was presented. And if there was a suitable alternative site nearby that would perhaps provide near equivalent coverage to a cell tower operator, that might be an appealing, no pun intended, solution around this problem versus, you know, the worst case scenario was that a, you know, Judge Mastroianni just rules in favor of Verizon and gives them their tower as they applied for it and directs the, the planning board to just issue a permit. Right, and then that's the worst case scenario for the town. Especially, you know, and the residents in the Lexington Circle area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doug. I was thinking maybe that subcommittee you're heading up on broadband applications would want to take on some of this stuff.
They're, they're going to look into that, absolutely, but I don't know that it's completely, it's more about how do you provide internet connectivity? And yeah, five G is a, is a key. Look at that and other wireless technologies, but it's not about the coverage per se, especially for others, you know, cellphone, public safety and other stuff, you know? And I didn't hear any mention of public safety during the discussion tonight, but that's highly relevant for this discussion because public safety likes to locate on these towers to increase their coverage in town. And so that doesn't always work for them with the smaller, um, you know, smaller, smaller stations, so.
Hey.
I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, I'm thinking, uh, maybe continue this into December, meeting in December. I don't know that we need to deal with it at the next meeting.
Unless the planner has an update and some amazing consultant that wants to help.
Yes, unless there's breaking news that could be covered under routine business, but no. Uh, because this is in fact a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, what's our first meeting in December look like? Is it occupied?
I believe it's, our date's in December, the seventh and the twenty first.
He wants to check.
Make sure your sleigh is ready to take off?
December seventh. So we're going to have two meetings. We'll have two meetings. We will have two meetings in December, so. I don't, I don't know if there's, we could rush anything.
No, there's no read.
Yeah. The idea of starting early was, was to take. Yeah, be able to do our.
Yes, the seventh and twenty first are December.
You want to move it to the twenty first?
I'll need, I'll need.
So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, continue the hearing on the Wireless Communications Services District to December seventh at?
Not really.
Seven twelve.
Going to drag on.
So at eight thirty. So.
Do you want to do eight thirty or eight? Yeah, let's do eight. Everything else gets canceled in front of it. You want to sit here until eight thirty?
Very good. All right, Mr. Utzinger made a motion.
It's been a minute, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock on December seventh and Mr. Sutton seconded. So we'll have a roll call vote, Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave's been aye.
Just a four and a half.
Thank you. We are still talking wireless. We have, uh, a request, I believe we had this at the last.
Yeah, we did.
Noble Steed Crossing, uh, request to release lot sixteen from the Covenant in lieu of bond. And we have a three paragraph letter from Mr. Randy Brown, Randall Brown. I will read it into the record. Your planning board, this letter is a follow up to the letter sent by the Department of Public Works dated October eighteenth, twenty one. In regards to requests from Salt Marsh Brothers to modify the Covenant in lieu of bond for Noble Steed Estates. Over the past two weeks, DPW had a few conversations with Jesse Saltmarsh regarding plans for the outstanding work at Noble Steed. One item that is not complete is finishing the road loop, which includes a culvert crossing a wetland resource area. During a discussion on November second, Mr. Saltmarsh stated he did not plan to complete the loop and would rather install a cul-de-sac at the far end of the road. When DPW reminded Mr. Saltmarsh that did not conform the approved subdivision plans, he half jokingly took back his statement. However, later that day, DPW met with the owner of lots three and four during an inspection of the stormwater infiltration system. The road loop is shown to cut through lots three and four. The property owner stated Mr. Saltmarsh told him that he did not plan to complete the loop and the open space between the two houses could be used over space for lots in four. On November third, DPW reached out the email to Mr. Saltmarsh and requested clarification as to his intentions regarding the road loop. Mr. Saltmarsh did not provide a response to the question, rather stated he would reply at a later time. As of November ninth, no response has been received from Mr. Saltmarsh. Copy of this email correspondence is attached. As such, DPW has concerns whether Mr. Saltmarsh tends to construct the subdivision in accordance with the approved plans. As such, DPW does not recommend granting this request to release lot sixteen from the Covenant until Mr. Saltmarsh provides clarification regarding his comments and commitments to the project. I would be happy to discuss this further with the board. If you have any questions, let me know. Randall Brown, DPW Director. Is Randy, was Randy on the Zoom still or?
He's still on there.
Okay. So we have Randy's letter and he's online now to answer questions. What are we seeing here in the way of the plan?
That's just to get the general idea.
Still cul-de-sac here.
Lot sixteen, which is.
Bottom right.
Way down here. In the back. This one?
Yeah. So he wants to strip them here and work there.
Yeah, so lot sixteen is requesting a release on this one here. Far lower right hand.
Yeah. How far does the road go now? It goes up about here.
Uh, where are you? Yeah, yeah, they've cleared quite a bit.
Coming down, right?
No, you're coming here.
Coming in.
Yeah.
It goes all the way to there right now instead of completing the loop.
Right. But he wants to.
Where's the cul-de-sac?
Part?
Where would the cul-de-sac?
Right there, yeah, five, oh, we're like right there.
So.
Even so.
But he's not actually, I mean, we don't actually have a revision to something.
No. It would have to be similar to what Greens West brought in, it would have to be a modification to the subdivision. But Randy is recommending at this point, we don't release, uh, lot sixteen until we get clarification as to, uh, what, what's going to happen with that.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I can just add some summary information. So what the board has been requesting so far is the request from, uh, Saltmarsh. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Brown's correspondence, uh, that looks at the total value of work remaining, um, versus the real estate analysis that was provided to his office. Uh, and we have a latest correspondence right here. Uh, I did have, uh, a few conversations with Mr. Saltmarsh following, uh, if you will, I'm going to use the term that continues, uh, continuing this discussion at this meeting. To be direct, uh, he's certainly frustrated, um, with the process, uh, understands that a response has been requested, but his intention is that that response will, will be provided by his attorney. I wouldn't directly front his desk.
Well, he wants to do what he wants to do, he's got a company for change anyway.
Well, and that would reduce the, the cost, that would reduce the cost of the project because that culvert is probably, uh,
And I'd have to go back and look at my notes from the last time, but when we took a look at the map, it was very tight. The map that was presented to us and then compared to what the remaining work was.
The value of the, um, remaining work was five hundred and forty-four thousand. Um, lots eleven through fifteen and seventeen combined is five hundred and seventy thousand. So I'm sorry, that's twenty-six thousand dollar difference in value.
But that was without the, an official evaluation of what. Actually, that was the estimated work remaining versus.
That wasn't expected work.
How deep is the base coat and?
That's correct, and to be, uh, I guess fair, we may be looking at, although we're talking about related issues, there are separate paths for that. Road acceptance looks at, uh, ensuring that, that the data has been provided to back up the quality of work that's been performed on site and that the ASVIL plans show conformance to stormwater requirements and so on and so forth. Uh, so that, uh, a one called the workmanship component does follow a slightly separate path from, uh, the request that was, that's been.
The freezing value of the loss was provided by the contractor?
Is my understanding that a real estate, uh, analysis, um, by the sales agent, uh, was provided to Mr. Brown's office. I have not been privy to that, um, and it's my, I'm saying it's also one that, I know at this point in time perhaps is, has aged, uh, a little bit. Theoretically, uh, well, I don't, I won't go down that, it is.
Well, I think we should rely on Randy's.
Absolutely.
Recommendation, so.
At this point, yep.
I don't know what, what sort of.
Get more information from him or deny it.
So, yeah, those are the two choices, defer judgment at this point uh, or deny it.
I think, I think defer would be. I mean, they may come back with all the interest.
Yeah, put it out, I'd say, put that, that Saltmarsh is going to come back.
We would.
Put this on the agenda or what, what are you saying?
If you.
The twenty, the next.
And I can assign the time if it didn't.
Yeah.
Between other items coming up.
Well, do, 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 do it like the seventh? The seventh of December, I mean.
I don't see any harm in, given that, uh, we moved the session from the last meeting, uh, to this one, I don't see any harm in.
We've always continued at that point.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So put it on the next meeting. I hear a motion to, uh.
What time?
Table this till November twenty-third. Twenty-third.
If everyone's comfortable, it's a non-hearing item, I'll just assign the time that best fits.
So, second, okay, Mr. Utzinger made a motion to table it.
Day twenty-second.
Sunday twenty-third.
November twenty.
My calendar.
Seconded, Spina?
Seconded by David.
They call us the dayflints.
Okay.
Day squared.
Yeah, you know, it's like Larry Darrow and Darrow.
Glad I have all these people to help me out. Okay, review of plans, A and R plans for two eighty-one and two eighty-three. Oh, I'm sorry. Need a roll call vote on the motion by Mr. Utzinger, Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's gonna aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have anything on this, uh, approval not required?
Uh, I, through discussions, this is a good example of existing non-conforming, um, residential lots. The effort was to try to clean up some driveway access through a land swap. Uh, but I think the best way to describe it is creating as many new problems as it was resolving.
What is this on South?
Two eighty-one, two eighty-three, so. South, uh, Kane Farm, uh, I believe.
It's like three houses before Case Farm on the right.
Rising.
So all those houses that have been getting worked on is the. That, so it's one that he just redid the whole house. He said the whole row of houses has gotten.
Show Brock House.
I don't know, I don't know who.
So you have a letter?
It's not the one with the garage in front, that's Chris Gilmore's house, that one, they put a garage, they put an addition on. It's two houses past that on the right.
I know a case though.
Yeah, it's before, it's before Babe's house.
So you know it was Babe too?
Well, I know Katie is daughter.
I know who that's, I know it was Babe.
Yeah.
All right, John has a letter. John has a letter. Dear John. Dear John.
Dear members of the planning board. From Gary, uh, from Gary LaCourte. Through the advice I represent Andrew Felix and Dana Felix concerning the ANR applications indicated above. This time both Andrew Felix and Dana Felix both wish to withdraw their Form A approval not required application. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. Sincerely, Gary LaCourte. Uh, so this is, I think, just a matter of. Uh, procedure, accepting this request of withdrawal as we are at the 21st day today. Require action on it.
Ooh. I hear a motion to accept the withdrawal of the ANR. So. Mr. Utzinger made the motion, Mr. Spina seconded it. Both of us all vote, Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's gonna aye.
Let's work for day one, two, day two.
Thank you very much.
I'm David, this is David.
I'm sure it'll be back, will it be back, John? This is a scenario.
Where I think, no, I think, I think, in my opinion, it's best. There, there may be legal thinking out there that says, don't go forward with this, but the proposal right now essentially worsens and exists not conforming. An AR, we don't base our decision on that, I think it likely would be approved. But I think it's a, by creating a zoning violation, that's a building inspector zoning enforcement matter. That then lives on for the next 10 years.
Okay, we have a couple items under routine business.
No, we don't.
David Sutton will give a report on the master plan committee. No.
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate, it was a very good meeting, by the way, you did a great job facilitating.
Yeah, you did a great job.
I appreciate the planning board members showing up to help. With the legal process of officially appointing members of that master planning advisory committee meeting. We still have. The Conservation Commission and the Economic Development. Committee or commission to officially endorse who day one on that committee, so those two. Still need to be sworn in and also we. Uh, are going to have two high school students, I believe, as. Members, non-voting members. To contribute and observe. So we did have. Seventeen or so folks there.
A lot of great input.
Pretty well. And, uh, so the next meeting will be on the 18th of November. Did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, that's, that's 7 o'clock. It's a hybrid meeting once again. And. There'll be some important agenda items such as selecting who's gonna be the chair and the vice chair. And then trying to move forward with getting consultants to do. The master plan, phase one, and also the housing plan. So, uh, members were. Charged with. Looking at the October 5th presentation by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And John very nicely was able to post the 1967 and 1997. Uh, master plan materials. So it was interesting to see. The 67, the 67 plan was done by a consulting firm, so you're trying to get a flavor of what a consultant. I think it's 230 pages. And then the 97 plan was done by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So you, you can see kind of just looking at the table of contents, the various things that, you know, they, they looked at. So. That's that. At this point, any questions, comments?
Since we have to vote in the economic development and the conservation committee members?
Yes.
We need a form of the planning board on this next one as well?
Yes, we would, if that's the time that we would do it, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we might, if Mike's there, then we'll have it.
Yeah. So we'll have to, John will maybe have to help us out when we get closer to the 18th.
I'm, I'm eager rail.
I'm assuming both of those committees would probably have met, I don't know. Conservation for sure.
Conservation will.
Economic development, I don't know how they. Do their meetings.
I haven't, uh, haven't heard answers yet.
Or maybe if they could get a letter or something to us, just saying, this is the person that's, you know, we approve of or whatever.
It would be nice to have that, um, prior to the votes, assigning responsibility.
So we, but that's a good point, Dave. Yeah, we'd have to have enough to vote on that. Okay, short-term rental committee, subcommittee. That's been floating around for quite a while, we have two citizens who have stepped forward and. Said they would want to participate on that, but we need someone from the planning board. To, uh, sit on that subcommittee. So either Mr. Utzinger, I believe, or Mr. Sutton would certainly be helpful in.
I'm likely willing to do that.
Because that's been languishing, I think, for about three years. Uh, the initial uproar. Was down along the lakes and.
Who's on that? I'll get, Orión, who else?
Uh, Pat Odeorn and another gentleman. I can't think of his name, he's on the.
Wanting to grab my list? From back in June when I was previously here, hold on.
Back in June, yes. I know, I know the person, his first name is Richard, his last name escapes me.
Dr. Zalowski.
Whoa, the owl has spoken, thank you.
Owl sounds a lot like Doug.
Dr. Zalowski. Uh, I think a three, three-person subcommittee would be very efficient.
Megan, we already got Megan.
We got it, Dr. Zalowski. Yes, he lives over on Viningville Road. And of course, Pat lives down on the lake. So, uh, I don't know if. Think, I'll do it, we need any, Richard?
Yeah, do it.
Okay, thank you.
You can put Doug on that when he's not looking.
Doug Mowgli? Yeah, he's probably available.
He's on there already.
He's in the.
I've got Kyle Scott, Van Der Sen, Tammy Spencer, she's not here. Randy Brown, Doug Mowgli, Rhett Vanish, Safety Officer. And then Pat Odeorn and Richard Zalowski, that's who Alan had approached to talk to about it.
Excellent, how many of them actually said yes?
They said yes.
Do it now.
We confirmed them, so.
We confirm.
You're gonna have a pretty good group then, I'll add.
When we confirm.
Yeah, we, I'll definitely, I can. Yeah, okay.
You got, you got my email, right?
Yes. Who's number do you want? Would you?
Now you're gonna hold these meetings at your place.
Um, maybe, yeah.
So you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, good, odd number, uh, nine members.
So if you could just make contact with them, make sure they're still on board, get their full numbers, email address, just give them mine.
And then, uh. It'd have to be sworn in. A letter, I guess we would send a letter from the planning board to the town clerk. Saying that. Oh, do we have to, no, I think the select board already authorized. This short-term rental subcommittee, as I recall.
I think so, I might have something in mind.
Because it, it's been several, it's been a while, it's been a couple summers, it would be good to get it done for the May. Town meeting. Before the next season.
Yeah.
Of rental. Whatever.
I'll reach out to everybody.
All right, uh, last item under routine, we had this. Citizen petition for major development moratorium. That was discussed. I listened to the tape, it was discussed last meeting.
A little bit.
And there was no decision made whether or not the planning board would move forward with having a public hearing. Really didn't get far with it. To me, to me, I don't know that a moratorium is really something that's needed at this point. There was mention of the marijuana moratorium. But the rationale for that was that we had no bylaw. For the marijuana management. Uh, however, with. This. Moratorium, it would. Limit development. Major development. Temporary moratorium. But the rationale is not the same as the marijuana because. We have bylaws, we have chapter 185. We have our process which runs and we've experienced some appeals. That's the way things play out sometimes. But we do make decisions, we have public hearings and so forth, so. At this point, I. Wouldn't want to move forward with anything, uh, in this regard. The citizens certainly have the opportunity to submit a petition. To the select board and with, uh, 10 registered voters signing that petition, they can get an article on the annual town meeting. If, you know, that's the approach that.
10 signatures or 10%?
10. Yes, people don't realize that you can get things on annual town meeting, that's a very democratic, open process. But, uh, I think, uh, also with Mr. Dougherty not being here, I'd like to carry this under routine business. Because I think, of course, Michael would want to, uh, participate in some way on that. Any comments from the audience?
I am, yeah.
Yes.
I thought it was already on the 11th, 23rd. Am I correct?
If, uh, may I? Mr. Vice Chair? So some of the discussion at the last meeting had to do with. That this was going to be formally advanced through the select board or open up a public hearing. Um, that being, if you will, the term, that public hearing in order to involve participation. Both of the board and the public. And so the target. From that discussion was November 23rd. Uh, I did speak with. Mr. Dougherty. Uh, after the, the last meeting and his, uh, request was that we had called it as an informal discussion. Targeted for the 23rd, is also planning board informal discussion.
Okay. But it, it's not a public hearing on a bylaw, on the bylaw that would institute a moratorium.
Not, well, we are discussing, I suppose, the same matter, but not as a public hearing. Yeah.
Are we?
Yep.
So back upon 23rd, right? What time, John?
But it, but it would be, it would be a time for an agenda item.
Yeah.
What time would that be?
I will, it won't be before 7:30 and it won't be at 8 o'clock, since those are the slides that they're.
So 7:12.
I'll squeeze that in, we have one new application coming in.
7:12. And it gets 7:12, yeah.
Okay, so, uh. Yes.
Just a little further, I would like to say it does not prohibit development, it just puts a pause. On major development. And the cap, our trigger that I put in there, 60,000 square foot project. And that, we only have two buildings in town right now. One of them is WGI, it's 63,000 square feet, Big Life is 59,000 square feet. So it's something larger than that. It's not prohibiting. Or, or business.
Or something like 100.
Master plan is being developed. And to pause anything that's in the direct contradict. What that master plan would recommend.
I think also it's something about 100 units, also.
It's a criteria.
Is that correct?
50 units.
50 units for housing.
15 units.
Right here.
50.
It's on for the 23rd as an agenda.
What's your line?
There's still water moratorium effect on that as well.
And this still includes your changes to existing, though, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, we haven't modified anything, we haven't discussed it. The date was in the last, however, it was 23, not 2024.
But the water moratorium is only for city water, not well water. Any development can make a plan where they choose to do city or develop their own well. Okay, thank you, uh. We're all set?
Yeah. Make a motion, close the meeting.
We need to make a motion. Or it's already on the 23rd.
It's on.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, you got Mr. Sutton with the motion. Roll call vote, Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, John.
Holders, guys.